December 2nd, planning board hearing, meeting. We are one member short tonight. Please know that this meeting is being recorded, may be broadcast or rebroadcast on Westford Cat. I'll start with open forum. Joe, you have anything for open forum?
Just so the board is aware, this afternoon, we did give a request to continue the second public hearing item on your agenda for 115 Depot to the December 16th meeting. So that anybody who's here for 115 Depot, we did get the request to continue to the December 16th meeting.
Anyone from the board have anything? Public hearing?
I do. I attended the monthly meeting, NEMCOG meeting, and interestingly, NEMCOG is no longer doing the weights and measures program, which I'm sure, you know, you're aware of, the town's aware of. So the town is going to end up having to figure out how to get that work done outside of NEMCOG. The other thing is the draft strategic plan is being, was sent out, and everybody is reviewing that. The third thing that came up at the meeting is they did get a grant for a regional energy manager position for a contract through NEMCOG.
All right, great. Thank you, Johnny. Anything for open forum?
No, nothing.
Anybody in the audience, anything for open forum? All right, so we'll move right along to our first public hearing, the continuation of PB 2415, 7 Carl Thompson Road. As requested, we do have engineering here, as well as the traffic expert. I would ask, if people have questions, they come up to the microphone, state their name and their address, ask the board the question, and we'll get the answer for you. Anything you'd like to start with, Attorney Robbins?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from Ferrell &amp; Robbins. Also with me tonight is Matt Waterman from Land Tech Consulting, and also the project applicant. At any moment now, I expect my traffic engineer, Kim Hasaviradi, and I'm glad he's not here yet, just in case I just butchered his last name. I know that we continue the public hearing. Thank you, Paul, for being here, and Sam for being here. I think that we can probably answer any outstanding questions that the board or the abutters have this evening. The only new information, here's Kim now. The only new information I have for the board is I think after the last meeting, we heard some comments from the abutters concerned about perhaps overnight deliveries or overnight traffic, you know, and interrupting their sleep, and wondering what we were going to put in there. So I suggested to staff a condition that we would be closed between 11:00 PM and 4:00 AM. That way, we wouldn't have to worry about overnight deliveries, traffic, or anything like that. And then if any company or business wants to come in and be open between those times, they'd have to come back to this board for a public hearing. So that was the only new information I had added since the last public hearing. We have nothing new to present, so I will hand it back over to the board for any questions or comments you might have.
Great, thank you. I'll ask the board first, do any questions, comments, before we go to the?
One, just to be open, I did talk with Joe and Jeff last week. I did ask them some questions. I appreciate, Melissa, you're responding to the hours of operation. Suggested we try to set some baseline hours of operation before we ever get to a change of use, discussion for any of the individual businesses. But also, I want to suggest that we somehow put something into the orders and conditions that clearly state that for a change of use, that is a change of use. So all the initial ones will be considered a change of use. There has to be a hearing process in which all the abutters are notified, so that they can participate in that discussion, since we're not really discussing at this time what the nature of these businesses are, so there's no way to respond to somebody objecting to a particular business use.
So let me just make sure we're clear. So they're going to construct the building, but as they rent out each unit, they're going to have to come before us? Is that what you're suggesting?
They already have to.
Well, generally speaking, just, Mr. Chair, I can speak to that quickly. The process now is if I have an allowed use, that would be allowed within your conditions of approval, and would not be open between 11:00 PM and 4:00 AM, and the building commissioner, whoever that may be, or staff determines that that's an allowed use, and the parking requirements, which I think we're using two parking spaces per 180 square feet, as long as they meet those requirements, they would not have to come back to site.
Right, but anything that's a change of use that changes those requirements?
Yes.
Okay, you've got to make sure that we allow the neighbors to be so notified for that discussion. So if it involves a discussion with us, there should be a notification process for the abutters.
You okay with that?
I'm happy to make a minor modification to my suggested language earlier, that any uses not in that timeframe, or any change of use after the initial use would require a public hearing.
Okay, great, so, great. Charlie?
No, nothing, thank you.
Nothing new, thank you. Okay, open up to the public. Please, again, stand up, name and address, questions directed to the board.
I missed last, two weeks ago, but the meeting before that, I spoke to the owner, and said that they would have provided very tall trees all around the perimeter of the property, so they will be hidden from us, because the back of the building will be facing us. So just was wondering if that is, it's been put for, you know, in writing, or is just a promise that it's not going to be kept?
So I almost didn't hear, it's on the plan, right, it says, show?
They talk about trees and flowers, but it's not like a fence of tall trees, like he said to me, that will cover the whole building, and we could not see it from our property. We will face in the back of the building.
Do we have the plans?
Sure, I'll pull them up.
And the plan set does include a landscape plan with not only buffers that we're maintaining with non-limited clearing, providing natural buffers of existing vegetation, but then areas where we provide berms and formal landscaping, living walls, arborvitae plantings targeted in two specific areas where the two closest residential properties are.
So he'll get the plan up in a second, and we'll show what they intended to do with the landscaping. So they have to follow that plan in order to be in compliance.
Okay, okay.
So just give Joe a second, I'm sure he'll get it up there for us.
Could I ask you to repeat what your address is?
38 Forest Road.
Okay.
So for my property, I will just see the back of this.
Yes. So, and here's the proposed limited clearing, maintaining the natural vegetation. You can see it goes as wide as 100 feet down in the southwest corner, and then it gets to about 50 feet, give or take, when you get to this northwesterly corner. So we were concerned with traffic circulating counterclockwise, headlights directed this way, and so there's a row of about, I don't know, I would guess, maybe 20 arborvitae down in this stretch, and that's to screen headlights from this direction. And this one, kind of, there's kind of a natural berm, because we're kind of excavating out in this area, so we didn't have a proposed berm like we do down in this corner. So this one, you can see the arborvitae's living wall down along this stretch. And again, that's for headlights coming and circulating counterclockwise. I think if cars are coming this way, the headlight is less of a concern, and it goes off into the woods. So those are the two areas where we focused, the living walls and the earthen berm.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, just listening to the, yeah. Oh, sorry. Yeah, that was yours. Just to be clear, you've been-
Please, name and address, please.
Lisa in Akashon-Holzberg, Betty Lane. You've been wonderful about communicating and discussions about what to do here. I just wanted to make sure I understood what just transpired here, though. She's at 38, I think, right? I don't see where 38 is there, do we know exactly? And I think she was asking if she's going to see the building, but I was hearing, I was hearing about vegetation, about headlights, rather than visibility to the building. Is that what you were asking? I just wanted to make sure the question that was asked was answered, because I didn't hear the question being answered.
Well, I think Matt's point is that, you know, the putting arborvitae is partly provide the screening from headlights, but I think-
From headlights?
Right.
Right, so I think she was asking about seeing the building, is that what you were asking about?
Yeah.
Because that wasn't answered.
Across Forest Road, across Forest.
I just want to make sure you're-
Yes, I am across the road from McCarthy.
Put the microphones, just so it's recorded.
So my property is across from the McCarthy, which is adjacent to the building.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so but from my property, I'm on a hill, I can see the trees, and once they're down, I was wondering what is going to be our view, because I'm concerned about the value of my property at that point, what is going to be visible, besides the noise, of course. They said there's not going to be any noise, there's going to be any noise at night, but during the day as well. I'm concerned about that, how the landscaping will change, because I see, I saw the building on the other side of Fruit Ford, they've been building for the gym, it's basically nothing. Those two ugly buildings, and no trees, no flowers, it's just like, like something really ugly to see, so I'm concerned about that, honestly.
That's a different applicant, that's a different-
It's a different applicant?
Yeah, it's not the same.
That's why I was asking, knowing, I had a time, what it's going to look like, that's why I was concerned about it.
No, that's different. I think in the arborvitae should be on this corner over here, it looks like, I think, based on the plan, right, Mike, so partial cover, I imagine that would screen partial view of the building as well.
Right, your house is up higher, so I'm not sure that there's anything they can really do to totally disguise it, but I think that the arborvitae-
Not totally, but he was talking about tall trees, so I don't know what he meant by tall trees. It could be pine trees, it could be like regular trees, I don't know.
So the arborvitae trees, you know what those are, the green fluffy ones?
Okay.
So those are better screened?
Is there something that is going to completely go around the perimeter of the construction, or just in some spots?
I think in certain, well, I'll let Matt answer. I think in certain spots, and where there's, you said it burns?
Back to the landscape, so it's, there were areas that we targeted with screening, particularly, there's also a proposed fence that goes along this whole wall, that goes around the entire areas that we do directly about residential properties, just a six-foot stockade fence. And then additionally, we targeted living walls, where the areas where we were trying to screen headlights, and then there's also formal plantings, what we kind of consider, you know, traditional shade trees around the perimeter of the property to screen it consistent with the zoning bylaws.
What do you mean by living walls, please?
It's, the arborvitae's are planted really close together, and they're the green giants, they're the ones that glow really tall.
Okay.
There's different types of arborvitae, but this one is expected to grow, I think. Up to 15 feet, is that correct, Walter?
Fifty.
Up to 50.
Right.
See?
You're not going to be able to hide the building, but she's up high, she's always going to see it.
Yeah. But we did provide the green giant arborvitae, which is a specific species.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Patrick Shields, 51 Forest. I wanted to thank engineering, took some time with me this afternoon to go through and look at drainage that I'd raised in the previous meeting. I did not get an answer of where my drainage goes. For reference, it is a plastic pipe, it's about a foot. It is aiming towards where there is a current drain on forest, that then goes and is marked to going to the wetlands on the corner of this property. Whether it goes there or not, I'm not sure, but I'm assuming at this point that it's not in a place which would impede the building of this, so I think that that's no longer a concern.
When you say your drainage, what is this?
So, since I bought the property, I don't know anything about it, other than it's there. There is a one-foot, you know, there's rocks and a one-foot plastic pipe for overflow of the vernal pond that's on the front of my property at 51 Forest. So when the water level gets high, it overflows into that and goes somewhere. So I, as a separate thing from the issue at hand, I am going to take on trying to figure out where that goes, and, you know, what's going on there, just so that it's well-known. But, like I said, I was concerned before that it might impede this process, but I'm pretty confident at this point that it doesn't, so that was just, wanted to share that information. I do still have concerns about visibility. I realize, looking at my back deck, I can see the existing building very clearly now in the winter, and so the giant mass of that building is going to be an eyesore, and go from the nicely wooded area to, you know, a cleared-out area. I don't think this is your purview, but there's, my concern was if there was a way in which we could tie the ability, I know they're putting a six-foot fence, but ability for neighbors who want more visible screening to be able to put higher fences up? Is that, that would be to the zoning board, I would assume, or?
For us to require that, or they want to put it on their own property?
If, no, it, basically, as a contingency, if this moves forward, to allow residents, the abutting residents, to be able to put a taller-than-six-foot fence?
On their own property?
Correct.
Yeah, that wouldn't, that doesn't fall under our purview. Talk to the building inspector, I don't think that there'd be any, any issue with that. If you put it on your own property, no.
Okay. Is there, when those, I know it's not your board, but generally, other than abutters opposing it, if it's not impeding street traffic, usually those aren't blocked? I assume that's the only-
I think if you explain why you're putting it up higher than six feet, because you've got a new building that you want to try to-
Block.
Block, then I think that makes sense.
Right, okay. I assume the applicant wouldn't have problems with that, right?
Yeah, so over six feet, you need to go to the zoning board of appeals to get a variance, to put a fence over six feet. Make your argument to the board of appeals, the zoning board of appeals, and they'll hear your argument, and then make a decision.
Can we, as residents, get, I don't know, some conference, some message from the applicant that they won't oppose it? I assume they wouldn't, but-
I mean, I think it would have to be case by case. I don't want to speak for the applicant, but, I mean, I don't think that'd be part of our order conditions.
Okay. All right, well, I thank the board for your patience with us spending so much time with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Anybody else? Yeah, so glad Paul's here tonight. Paul, if you could explain to me, through you, when Guthrie was here, talking about the, you know, the building that Westford Cat's housed in, and the, what was it, the accessory building changes there, the parking spaces, all that, we were all in agreement here on Carl Thompson having drainage challenges, that it wasn't really built up to snuff for, you know, heavy trucks, this, that, whatever. Can you just, Chair, what's the, what's the status of that road? Is it going to be able to handle what we're looking at here? What's the drainage going to look like? He's been wonderful in talking to me. He already sees that there's some challenges, and they're doing the best they can to mitigate making it any worse for me. I just want to know, what's the town doing to look at that, to make sure things don't get worse out there?
Status quo, we are unaware of any drainage problems or issues on Carl Thompson. We keep records of every phone call, every email, we goes into our, I forget the name of the software, our database, and we've got nothing ever on Carl Thompson for complaints, so we're not aware of anything. But the director of public works will certainly, you know, address any issues that come up if we become aware. We're especially concerned with ponding in the road, you know, water is the enemy, is our biggest enemy on, on road surfaces, so we've got to get it off, that's why we crown our roads, we pay attention to that. But other than that, we're not aware of any issues.
So that's greatly concerning to me, because this goes back to Chip Barrett days. They came out, took a look at things, even came out and put a lip of some asphalt there for us, to kind of guide water into the-
Right.
Drain.
Yep, dripage.
So we can't say that the town's not aware, somebody was aware. Whether they made you aware or not, that's a different story, but they came out and tried to do something to mitigate a little of something. So that's why I'm asking here-
So I think, in my opinion, your next step is the director of public works. Make sure that's on the-
Well, I don't think they build roads, that's not their purview.
He had just said that if there's an issue, right, the director of public works would direct engineering, or whoever to fix it.
So it's the same thing, Mr. Chair, that when you talked to Chip, and he came out and fixed your problem?
He did the best he could, he put a Band-Aid on it.
Sure.
He did the best he could. So what I'm asking is, as taxpayers, we should be aware of what's the condition of the road, and what, what costs are we looking at to, to make sure this road can handle traffic that we're looking at?
Sure. So we do maintain a road safety, a road surface value for each of our roads. We, town meeting authorizes us to appropriate some money for us to drive all of our roads in town with, you know, it's all public information now, but we drive our roads, and they, we take pictures, we have scanning equipment on, in the van, they measure potholes, cracks in the roads, and they all end up with a road surface rating, and that road surface rating helps us determine, it's all part of our pavement management. And so I can, we can look up your road surface rating, but it's not anything that's-
We were told last time, I think it was like 85.
Oh, yeah.
It was hot.
Practically new. That's a good road, have they paved that recently?
I can't remember, but it's the drainage I'm talking about?
Seventeen.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, yeah, then that road should be fine.
Yeah.
But if you have any concerns about Carl Thompson, or any road in town-
Well, this has been, this has been discussed at meetings over and over and over again over the years, so it shouldn't be a surprise.
First off, I think the drainage discussion with Dave Guthrie was up at the intersection with Rock.
No, no, we specifically talked about the whole road, he understood where I was, I understood where he was.
It was very specific to one part of the road.
Right, but I think we want, we're talking about this particular project, and I think the design of this project isn't allowed to put more water out on that road.
It can't, by law.
And so I think the existing condition, I think it would be safe to say that this project is not allowed-
Okay.
-to make the existing condition worse.
Okay, so again, I'm not worried about him, I'm worried about the town.
Really, you know what, it's kind of outside this project, though.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me ask this question. Laval did a great job, his building looks great, I'm thrilled, he put his extension up, because it's more tax dollars for the town, it's better business for him. But, you know, that changes the water trajectory, and so folks had to work together to address what they could. This might also impact the water trajectory out there. So whose job is it, to work with whom, to address it after the building's up?
So what the engineering has done, has reviewed the plan that was designed by Land Tech of where the water's going.
Yeah.
So if those systems aren't working, engineering is going to have to figure out why.
So as an abutter, I just want to know, after the building's up, if there are issues, with whom do I speak?
I'd start with-
Do I speak with the town, is it with highway, is it with Paul? I don't think I should be bothering the applicant, so-
I would, I would start with Mr. Morset, or Mr. Genowitz, right? If, if there's an issue with the way this was constructed, and it's causing issues with the road, then it was constructed according to the plans.
Okay, sounds good.
I would start with Mr. Genowitz.
And I may even take pictures with the next storm before you're there, so we've got documentation of the issues we've already got. Thank you very much.
Do that as well, we document all, we take pictures of everything. We were out there in our most recent rain events, you know, making observations, nothing stood out to us, nothing.
Okay, so I'm going on record as telling you there are issues out there, we can't keep saying that there aren't.
Sure.
I'm telling you that, it's been discussed over the years.
Concerns public safety, or the need for public works to do remedial work at this point.
Well, I'm not sure that's true, but we'll, we'll discuss it further. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Waiting on a traffic engineer, or?
No, Kim is here.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No? Okay, good. We'll sit at that. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close the public, motion and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, so we've got a bunch of decisions here, don't we? And-
Need us anymore, Mr. Chair?
We need to change the language accordingly, as discussed tonight in the decision for-
Site plan?
I have a site plan, right? The site plan.
How is it operation?
Hours of operation and change of use notifying the abutters.
Just a point of procedure, Mr. Chair, that will only go under a site plan review?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So why don't we just go in order that we have them in here? Can I get a motion to approve PB 2415 stormwater management permit for 7 Carl Thompson Road?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve PB 2415 special permit for a major commercial project, 7 Carl Thompson Road.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve PB 2415 parking reduction, 7 Carl Thompson Road.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And PB 2415, the famous war pod, 7 Carl Thompson Road.
Second, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And, oh, one more. 2415, site plan review as amended by discussion tonight, 7 Carl Thompson Road.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
And thank you, Mr. Erickson, for all your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I could just point out to the public that's still in attendance, we're always available to answer any questions, our contact is on the website. We work for you, so we're available if you have, if any issues come up and you want to talk to anyone.
And thank you for coming in, Mr. Eric, also, Sam, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, if you're here for PB 2427, 115 Depot Street, it's going to be continued to the December 16th meeting here at 7 o'clock, Town Hall. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next item, general business, 179 Littleton Road, PB 2431. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so this one, for some of you may be familiar, there was a similar kind of petition back almost 10 years ago, 2014, 2015 timeframe.
I didn't ask about that.
For one reason or another, it didn't go forward, so it has lapsed at this point. So it's coming back in a slightly different form, the cooler shifted, we planned north on, on here, but I'll let the applicant speak to a little more detail about it. It's generally the same project, add a walk-in cooler to the existing building.
So good evening, my name is Ian Ainsley, I'm an engineer with Meis de Brem. I'm here with Jason Pino of J-Town Management, he's the franchise owner of the Dunkin' Donuts location. This is Hafner's Gas Station at the corner, four corners. We are trying to put in an 8 by 16 walk-in freezer. Like Joe said, this was actually very similar to something that was approved administratively about 10 years ago now, and it didn't move forward at the time. We're coming back in with a slightly different location, slightly different dimensions, and we just want to get this approved and be able to put in the freezer, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, great. Over to Bob, you have any questions, Bob?
I do. Could I ask what materials are going to be on the exterior of this freezer?
I believe it's concrete. I know the bottom is a concrete slab, I think the walls are concrete as well.
They're, no, they're like a, it's like a traditional walk-in box, like, it's like a metal, it's like a galvanized, I think it's like aluminum, maybe? I don't have the specific material, but it's, it's just a standard one that you see in anywhere else, it's like a traditional walk-in box that, I think of, an example.
Let's see if-
It's basically just like, it's silver, but we paint them, so they're-
Would you paint them probably a color to match? On the outside?
Yeah.
So I guess the reason I'm asking is durability and ability to withstand a car or truck crashing into it.
Sure.
And so what I, what I didn't see on the plan here were any kind of bollards or anything to kind of protect the structure from these vehicles, since it's going to stand out-
Putting in bollards of-
No, I have no issue with bollards. I actually would prefer that, because I have, I don't want, the same thing that you don't I actually would prefer that because I have, I don't want, the same thing that you don't want to happen, I don't want it to happen because I don't want to buy it twice.
So that's what I was asking, so that's, my, one of my recommendations is to consider that, so that there is some safety from vehicles that are moving about that parking lot there. The next question just has to do with safety, and this is probably something that is more for the Board of Health, but what kind of door access to the freezer and ability for, to prevent somebody from getting locked in there would be my concern, but I want to turn that over to the town to review.
Building permit phase, make sure safety measures are put in place.
But no, other than that, my understanding from talking with Joe, is there, are plenty of parking spaces here that this would still maintain the number required for the use in this facility? And I guess the last question was, we did see a letter from, I think it was Board of Health today, that says there may be an undocumented septic system somewhere in the...
No, she said that there's a tank, according to her plans, that wasn't shown on this plan.
So I obtained a record septic plan from 2015, and that's where I got the septic locations that are shown on here. I've reached out to the health department to get whatever document they have and to see if the property owner has anything in their files as well. I don't quite know where it is until I see it.
Yeah, so that's it, I mean, I'm fine.
Joey?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
No, I think, it's fine, I was just curious, I actually thought it was going to be an addition to the addition that you put on 10 years ago, so I didn't know why you didn't do it, but, no, I think as long as you have something protective around it, where it's bollards, or sometimes you see like a low steel kind of frame, like a fence around it?
Yeah.
Something like that to protect it, I think that's fine. Yeah, no other issues.
All right, so can I get a motion to authorize administrative review for PB 2431, 179 Littleton Road?
So moved. Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next, we have minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for, what is it?
November 4th.
November 4th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, any requested changes? Looks good to me. Good, Bob?
Nope, nothing.
All right, motion is second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And there was no correspondence, I don't believe?
No, Mr. Chair?
Nope. All right, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Terrific, thanks, guys.